I'd like to call this meeting to order. The press office meeting is being recorded by Zoom for the purpose of taking minutes and talking on cable TV. Mr. Chairman, please strike with a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, united in every soul, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to be very welcome.
I'll start with Mark Scherup.
Here.
Tonya Pagliano.
Here.
Our chair, Patricia.
Here.
John Boyle.
Chair.
Max Scherup.
Dan Anderson.
Here, John Fescher.
Our town manager is Terry Williams.
I'm here.
Eric Gibson.
Here.
Okay. All right. Next on the agenda is the minutes of June 2nd, 2025, August 18th, 2025, September 22nd, 2025, September 30th, 2025, and October 6th, 2025.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move that the minutes of June 6th, 2025 be approved as submitted.
June 6th.
Second.
June 2nd.
June 6th.
June 2nd.
June 2nd.
A second.
Okay. Emotions been made in second. Is there any further comments or corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Stand. Mr. Chairman, I move that the minutes of August 18th, 2025 be approved as submitted.
Okay, emotion's been, oops, a second?
Second.
Okay, emotion's been made in second. Is there any further corrections or comments? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Stand.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the minutes of September 22nd, 2025 be approved as submitted.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, emotion's been made in second. Is there any further discussion or corrections? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Stand.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the minutes of September 30th, 2025 be approved as submitted.
A second?
Second.
Okay. Emotion's been made in second. Is there any further comments or corrections? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And, Mr. Chairman, I move that-
I abstain.
Okay, I'm abstained.
Also, I abstain.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the minutes of October 6th, 2025 be approved as submitted.
A second?
Second.
Okay, emotion's been made in second. Is there any further comments or corrections? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so on.
Uh, may I have the way to come down here?
Sure.
I seem to have in my package a Monday, September 8th. Is that something we gave you?
Terry, I think I included it in the package but not on the agenda, which he will probably have to-
Oh.
It's not on the agenda.
Put it on the agenda for the second.
Okay.
Self-sustained.
So we're just doing that one. Okay. Public to address the board. This is the time when the public may address the board and any items listed on the meeting agenda. Any issue or matter of the town, if you intend to comment on a not endless panel meeting agenda, please do so at this time, as we will not be taking comments from the audience when you item it up for board discussion. The public address and board site segment will last no longer than 30 minutes. Each individual will be given up to three minutes. If you intend on addressing the item for the board, we ask you to do the following. Please reach your hand if you're recognized by the board chair. Please step up to the podium. Please identify yourself by name, address, or company or institution you represent. Please address your comments to the board chair. Please make your comments concise and try and repeat statements made by others. Discussion or debate on any issue may not take place at this time. Your chair or designated may answer questions on procedural matters. Is there anyone that wants to speak on any items on the agenda? Okay. Moving on, I would like to move, if it's okay with the board, if nobody objects, number eight, up to next, please.
Second.
Okay. Okay, thanks, Mike. Earlier tonight, we went into an executive session with contract negotiations with Mr. Eric and Anderson. It was a successful negotiation, and we entered a three-year contract with our downtown manager, Eric Anderson. Start date to be November 17th.
Congratulations.
You should, you know?
Yeah, we already got it.
No. You're not the whole public?
No. Okay. Okay. Appointments. Mr. Board?
Yeah?
Mr. Chairman, I move that Jeremy Stringer and Margaret Peggy Pagliarulo be appointed to the Dalton Cultural Council effective immediately through June 30th, 2026.
Second.
Okay, emotion's been made in second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstain.
Is that you from here? No. Well, thank you for stepping up, though. That's good. And I think that rounds out the committee. That really was good.
Mr. Chairman, I move that James Doucette be appointed to the Dalton Board of Health effective immediately through June 30th, 2026.
Second.
Emotion's been made in second. Is there any further comments?
He's in here.
Jimbo's here. Got it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Jimbo, thank you. You want to collect the same thing?
I just want to say that I'm working with the board and the foundation and certainly town adults.
Well, we thank you for stepping up. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, I move that Nancy Osters and Jennifer Pierce be appointed to Dalton Advisory Cable Division effective immediately through June 30th, 2026.
Second.
Okay, emotion's been made in second. Is there any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So on. Thank you, Nancy. Thank you. Okay. The request for commission to host Soldier on 5K Walk Run on Sunday, November 9th, 2025.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant permission for Soldier Arm to conduct a 5K walk run on September 9th, 2005, provided they coordinate with the Dalton Police Department.
Okay. Second.
Emotion's been made in second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
One note, I didn't see the map attached here, but that's-
I didn't see it either.
That's fine. Uh, it's not attached to you, but may have been in our emails.
We already did a survey, right?
Yeah.
So we're going tonight.
Yeah. Okay. Number nine. Clean Air Committee update. Mr. Board.
Terry, you want to speak first, then? Well, I'll leave the little bit that I put in my town manager update, and I'll skip that part when I read the update.
Okay.
Great news. Air Partners, our air and sand consultant on the Berkshire Concrete Corp. dust problem, was in Dalton on Saturday and installed four air monitoring stations at different locales that should be able to help us get actual measurements on any materials leaving the BCC property and settling in residential areas. Later this week, we will get samples of the materials from 10516 parcel, 10516, to compare with dust on nearby properties. So they're coming. We have permission to access the BCC property. There will be someone who will chaperone whoever goes, and there's a number of, Tony, I think you seen the thing, you know, they need a list of the people and various conditions. And I think Alex is looking into some of the items, but that, to me, is the biggest update is it's really pleased, you know, I negotiated these contracts with Tony's help and got these all fully executed. It took longer than I think we all wish it had, but now that these are in place, I understand, although there's some question how you access the website involved, that there's the ability to actually, for anyone to log in and see updates as they are happening on these different devices. And there are four around town. We have one at the shooting range, which is meant to be kind of, you know, to just take a measurement to show that there isn't that much dust, because that's to the west of BCC and the prevailing winds, of course, blow out of the west. And then the other three locations are on different residential properties, you know, basically Long Raymond Renee Lawrence area to see what sort of, you know, dust collection there that occurs. And there'll be areas where, you know, you don't have much dust, and then there'll be times when, of course, you know, you get a big wind and dry conditions and, you know, certainly that could be. So it should be very interesting. Tony?
Now, I want to thank John and Dave Pugh. They Saturday morning went with their partners to site these four monitors, as Terry explained. And as Terry said, this Thursday, hopefully David and I and John, certainly you're welcome four o'clock, it's tentative, but that's when we'll go, hopefully, weather permitting, to tape a sample, and then we'll have other samples from neighborhoods accordingly from the past that may be-
And they'll get them down to Needham where they're located.
I'd also want to point out that there is a link, a link for the public to tap into in terms of real-time measurement. I'd like this board to approve us posting that link on the town's website.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, Lori, Vass Lori and Lori.
Wait, is that the one that? I did say yes this morning, but I do believe permission needs to be granted from a third party. I don't know whether virtually it is.
It's a map.
It says it's a Google Drive.
Yeah, it might be, well, maybe David and you, yeah, he would be the one to get you that and then we post it.
Yeah.
That's agreeable.
He'll need that, you know.
Do they already know? I'd like to-
Make the motion, Jerry.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the data has been collected by the town apparati for measuring wind and sand motion in the BCC property. Be posted on the town website.
Second.
Okay, emotion's been made in second. Is there any further comments or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, carrying on in that vein, Bob and Terry last week gave me information regarding a grant through the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. This is an air sensor grant. It would be for five sensors for one year. I just submitted the information today. I thought I had last week, but it seems like they allowed me onto the system last week and following up today. Took some time, but in any event, we're in the system. We now have to present corroborating evidence or substantiating evidence, which our committee, tomorrow we'll meet, starts. The application is due by the end of December, so we certainly have time ahead of us, and I hope you can get that. And as I said, that would be for five sensors. This would measure up to 2.5 particles per million, I guess, and that's the framework. I've also included monies in that. It's funny, the application said five sensors, but it also said a dollar amount, and by my calculations, given what we've expended to Berkshire, Berkshire, the Air Partners, that would be about $6,000 a year for each sensor. I've included additional monies. If indeed, I'd like to see Air Partners, assuming we got this grant, oversee this grant in terms of monitoring and maintenance and reporting to us, and also, these would have to be plugged in. The current ones are on solar, so these five, if we were to get the grant, would run continuously electricity. And so I would ask for monies to reimburse those residents who would be agreeable to having that. So I've included approximately $15,000, which will, again, substantiate in our grant proposal, assuming, you know, it runs. So just to inform the public that that's in the works, and our committee is on that. I'd also like to say our committee, and I was absent for five weeks, and I want to thank them, as I did last week, has done its job. Our mission was to create terms and conditions to help the planning board and hopefully the next step of Board of Health in terms of the special permit. I'd like to say our work would conclude, but I don't think that's the case. I'd like us to propose another mission statement to be effective, and again, I want our committee to speak to this in terms of coordinating, communicating, and I want to speak to that more so in terms of remarks at the end of this meeting. And also, of course, to oversee this grant and the current sighting that we have now through Air Partners. I think that's it for the Clean Air Committee at this juncture, but again, I want to get back to the notion of coordinating, communicating, given a recent complaint three weeks ago.
Tony, what do you think we'll hear as a result of this grant application?
I don't know, John. I know it's closest by December, and as we go- Until the end of December? Till the end of December. So we should, I would think we would hear in the winter or spring, to be honest with you. They're pretty fast.
Maybe?
Pretty fast. So if anybody has a shot, we do, and this was given to us, I think, by Lee Davis, right?
Yeah.
She pushed it on the road. So-
Mr. Chairman, if I had to, as a condition of the special permit, why wouldn't we ask Berkshire Concrete to carry that cost and monitor the air?
I'd like to, but-
Well, if we can, and there's no reason, really, the town should be paying for that necessarily, as long as Berkshire Concrete would agree to that condition.
Yeah, I stand with, I'm all for that. However, in the event that things don't happen, this is just, we can always say, "Thanks, but no thanks."
And to be clear, the monitoring you're talking about for this grant, is this going to be air monitors at different other locations than what had been established yesterday or Saturday?
That's for the committee to talk about. That is, right now, we have three residents, one on town property, so we would have to look at another two residents, and again, it would be tapping into their electric for the entire year, and I'd like to get a number on it. Is this grant, in other words, is the money out of our pocket? No, 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 no. Get it for you. Oh, no, this is, this is gratis. This isn't a dime out of our pocket. Other than the work we, oh.
If we get the grant.
If we get the grant, yeah.
Oh, I understand that.
This doesn't cost us anything.
My other concern is the location of the baseline monitoring station. Only being one doesn't really give you a baseline level in the whole town necessarily, and it's difficult to figure that out. You have to have multiple monitors, but we may need more stations set up in different parts of town that are completely removed from this to see what that kind of ambient air quality is. I mean, it's kind of, the other thing is too, you could put it next to the dirt parking lot near Kelly's, and you would get a high reading of sand blowing into that monitor. So this is, it's very difficult to curate an exact comparison of what other people in town might experience.
Well, this, these are five monitors. They're, they're recognized as, you know, standard equipment. And again, I would have Air Partners help us in terms of location, as they did here. They have pinpointed a place within parcel 10516 where they want us to take the sand, and no less, they have cited the shooting range. So the shooting range is downwind, and the other three are upwind. So ambient air quality is always difficult. We know, Berkshire Environmental said that, but it provides us with information, and that's what our residents want in terms of their safety and wellbeing.
Jimbo.
Jimbo, the 700A drive. I just wanted to clarify, Tony, the 2.5M, you referring to microns, which is pathosized?
PPLs?
No, it's not pathosmili.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Which is a concentration.
Okay.
It's a millionth of a meter is a micron.
Okay.
So they're so small, particles that small, you can't even see them.
Okay.
And that's why they're so dangerous, because they come way down in your lungs.
Yeah.
So the 2.5M refers to microns, which is pathosized.
Thank you, Jim. Thanks.
Thank you for clearing that out. The old second.
One last thing I want to say, again, this is remarks, I just want to thank Nancy on the Board of Health. She issued a letter today, which we received, based on Berkshire Environmental's recommendation that Berkshire Concrete initiate a dust mitigation plan, not a reclamation plan. And so I want to thank Nancy publicly for that, moving that forward in terms of asking them to come through. And again, remember, DEP has given Berkshire Concrete until the 18th of November. Of course, deadlines can be extended to meet their application requirements for material process. I'm going to step in there.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Thank you all. Jimbo, thanks for playing that, taking care of that. Okay, town manager update.
Okay. October 27th, I'm pleased to say that I had an opportunity to spend some time today with our new town manager during his visit to sign his contract and do some research for a local real estate. We had a very productive discussion about the transition, which will be fully underway upon its first full day on November 17th. I anticipate a very smooth process, and I'm excited to help him adjust to his new position. Congrats again.
Thank you.
Last Wednesday, I convened a meeting with Fussel O'Neil, engineer staff, along with Don Doyle, Bud Hall, Brandon Nish, and myself for the kickoff of the sewer engineering project for the middle third of Dalton Vision Road. It was a very good meeting, and several issues were discussed. The engineers are making a field visit this Wednesday to review the site. They're planning to run a line down the center of the street. That's the sewer line will, when it's put in, run down the center of Dalton Vision Road. And as we are requiring a gravity system, they will have some sections that will run as deep as 10 or 11 feet, and they said that that's borderline on the depth, but they said based on where the starting point is on the gravity that they might, because then the road currently goes up a little. You don't even notice it, but currently it goes up and then back down towards Calle East Drive. So they're going to provide sewer slubs for all the existing homes, and that would be on both sides, as well as some potentially developable parcels. They expect to have the final design done by November of 2027, in time for the construction season of 2028, when they expect the actual construction to begin. It sounds like the majority of the construction might be in '29, but yeah, that's a ways down the world, if you like. Another project that we've been doing involves the current Dalton website, which needs an overhaul, as it's missing many features, it's not ADA compliant, and it's difficult for the administrators to easily make required edits, additions, and deletions. We are considering folding into an updated website the separate sites of my town government and even code red, if possible. I have formed an ad hoc committee comprised of Lori Venizia, Dennis Rockwell, Tom Irland, Mitch Lacker from Revolution, and, you know, he's a town resident, and myself. We've already had two productive meetings where we reviewed seven different municipal website providers, have identified three of them that appear to warrant further investigation. We're going to distribute a website needs survey to departments committees, which asks each contributor to check on up to 14 core website functions. This will lead us in focusing on the necessary elements of a final product. It's expected the whole process will take some time to arrive at a final decision. One upcoming item of importance is the November 5th public hearing of the proposed contract between Charter Communications, doing business at Spectrum, and Dalton Community Cable Association. This will be at 6:00 PM, November 5th, and the public is strongly encouraged to come and see examples of the strong community programming. At 6:30 PM, there will be the actual public hearing, which is critical and crucial for the citizens to express the importance of the local access to Charter Cable, who uses the town's infrastructure to deliver its programming. Execution of a strong contract covering the next 10 years is an important item to put our Dalton Community TV on a solid footing. And then there's the great news about Air Partners. I've already said that. Terry, where would the hearing be held? Here.
Right here.
Right here. I should have said that. Yes, it's at the Senior Center. It really, it starts at 6, but the public hearing is at 6:30. At 6, they're going to apparently set up some items so that the public can see some of the programming that is provided by Dalton Community Television, and it's really critical. I'm really asking everybody to try and get people to come to the hearing, because to be truthful, Charter is looking to see what kind of a crowd we get at this hearing, and from my understanding, that has some weight as to then how strongly they feel the community is invested in things, and that will determine to some extent the amount of money that they're willing to put into their contract. So this is something to really get the word on, November 5th. And then just a reminder that the final parcel of the parting property bid submission needs to be made by 5:00 PM on November 6th, with the opening at the November 10th select board meeting. That would be the next one. The sealed bid must be a minimum of assessed value of the property, which is $28,900, and that a binary deposit of 10% of that, or 2,0890, must accompany the bid. So that's all I got right now. Any questions?
Can I piggyback on what Terry said? In terms of the public hearing on the cable, Michelle Morantz of the Dalton Democrats is advertising that amongst-
Oh, really?
-town's people and on the website. So it's starting that way. And in terms of the website, I think it's great. I have an article here, I'll share with you and Lori's, in terms of Pittsfield Oaks new website will click on Citi, updating their portal to be modern, streamlined, and easier, and neighbors see the $50,000 grant.
Yeah, we're going to look into a lot of these things. And Civic Plus is in Pittsfield, and they appear to be, you know, among the top three that we're looking at for that.
Excellent.
By Charles Stray and Mitch Lacker on the ad hoc committee, because of course, that's what all he does for business.
I'll have a question for Terry to judge. It's a separate issue. How would they count with the hot water and the heat in town hall?
My understanding is that, I believe, I can't say for sure that Don Davis is going to put in a line, a research line of some sort, that's going to improve that in the very near future. That's my understanding with Jeff. Jeff, here's-
He was, I talked to him with Mary in the last meeting, he was waiting for parks to come in still. He's helping me out.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Terry?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Is it possible for me to ask a question on one of the comments from the town manager?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Jane J. Chris, 138 Sunside Drive, and I apologize if this has already been answered.
Okay.
It may have been answered in special town meetings.
It hasn't been, but-
You mentioned the sewer work that's going to be done on Division Road.
Yeah, the engineering we're doing.
The engineering, okay. Now, you mentioned both sides of Division Road. Is Dalton going to be responsible for the expenses on that Pittsfield side?
No. To be clear, what we are going to do, and what we actually try to get Pittsfield to chip in a little bit of money, is when we run this thing down the center of the road, at every house, it'd be crazy not to do this, just because they're in Pittsfield.
Right.
You actually have little pipes that come off the side underground and go to the point at which the homeowners owns the land on both sides. And then someday, if they also choose to want to hook into the sewer system, that is on the homeowner to do so. And if, by the way, if they're septic, these people are on- And if, by the way, if they're septic, these people are on septic systems right now, and should their septic system fail, and the sewer line is in existence at the time that the septic fails, I'm of the understanding that DEP will not even allow them to rebuild their septic system or correct it, whatever the problem is, they will insist that the homeowner essentially do the work necessary to plug into the stub ends. So they're, they're stub ends, and they've got caps on them and buried until needed. Now, the Pittsfield side has the added complication that some of the properties are below the street level, and I understand that, you know, most of the system is gravity, particularly on the Dalton side, that unfortunately, for some of the Pittsfield people, there's the extra cost, because they'll have to have a pump that will, you know, show us a move or things up. And then that goes into Kalis Drive and connects to an existing big outfall, and we've been told Pittsfield is, there's plenty of capacity, even if there's a new development that comes up, you know, because they're doing a couple where they're kind of just saying, maybe someday they'll build some houses up behind the current houses of Dalton. So they're going to have a big connection there in the event that that ever comes to pass, because it's really hard to do something like that after the fact, you know?
Thank you so much, and thank you. I didn't want to.
Thank you for the question.
Didn't want to ask a dumb question, but.
No, that was a good question. Actually, I'm, I'm, I should have come up with that.
Thank you.
Next time.
Okay, any other questions for Terry? Okay, do you care again about this?
Yes, I do. I know last week we mentioned water metering, and tomorrow evening, the fire district meets, and I will be speaking to them, I'm just making the comments, I'm going to be making at this juncture. I did follow up with Blackstone. Blackstone is doing their second round of a million and a half dollar bond to have approval by their townspeople to install meters. Over the 30 years, I spoke to their town administrator, they have a number of different metering systems, it's, it's amazing. So they want to have continuity or unity in terms of one. So who believes this time the bond will pass, they will put out an RFP, company will install it, and it will be on a wireless system, and then relate to the DPW in terms of billing. The gentleman was very helpful, he mentioned that I contact Rentham, and I have a call in for Wednesday with their DPW person, I guess they did successfully do this, and this individual really knows his stuff in that regard. But I certainly want to blow the horn again, that our community is facing doubling of sewer rates within the two or three-year period. I want to be clear that metering is not going to lower your rates, it will lessen your rate, depending on where you are in terms of the scale. If you use more water in the upper 50% than the lower 50%, you will be paying more of what you would pay now on a fixed. But certainly, it's an equitable system, a judicious system, and even more so, it promotes conservation, and given the trials we've had of late. So I hope the fire district can talk with.
I really plan to have Jim Driscoll come and meet with two of the select board members, so now form, so we can just, you know, talk about this a little more generally. I should add, one of the things that was stated, John, you'll remember this.
Yeah.
At our meeting with Fussin O'Neil last week, and they, they didn't, I think, know that we had a flat rate because we weren't meters, and they said, you know, you can say one thing, eventually, we're going to probably be required by the government, the state government, to install meters, and they're, you know, really in favor of that happening. And the way Fussin O'Neil talked about it, they said, it's just a question of how long out you're going to have them. Eventually, if you don't do it yourself, they're going to come back.
And the notion of meter is you not only build for your water in accordance with the usage, but that number then is used to bill you for sewage. So.
Right.
There's a correlation there, so again, the less you use, the less you pay. The more you use, the more you pay. So it ties in nicely. So in any, I'm glad to hear if Jim does that, but I'll, I'd speak tomorrow to that, to what I've just said, said here also. Second thing, not as pleasant, I guess, we, the town received a complaint several weeks ago regarding dust and dirt leaving the BCC property of Rital Road. Now, we're revisiting this, same complaint. Back in August, BCC had put in a wash station, and we were very pleased, and that addressed the issue. In the interim, they put down a hard-packed driveway, thinking, I guess it would eliminate the dust or dirt. There's evidence in the complaint, video evidence, it is not, and obviously, it has to be ongoing. So here we are in a situation where we're not enforcing our bylaws, much like we said we would, like we spoke to earlier, I believe in August. We have to coordinate and communicate within the town, and I know our committee is going to take this up tomorrow, but basically, I'm, I'm looking at Terry, who's done a great job filling in, and Eric, I know will do a great job, but basically, they have to be our point people here when it comes to complaints. They have to communicate with the Board of Health, we met with Nancy last week, she was addressing this issue, the planning board, whomever, but it has to be on the shoulders of the town administrator to act and make a decision and communicate that to everybody, not the Select Board, not the Clean Air Committee. And I don't know what that protocol or procedure is, but we have to, we have to come up with something.
Right. And just a follow-up on, this, this is today's news on that particular complaint, and that is that the law firm that represents BCC, in other words, Dennis, is called for that complaint to be sent over, and we did such, we did directly over to that there. His colleague, Dennis Easton's colleague, asked for that today, and Lauren, Lauren sent it over.
I guess what I'd like this committee to do is to do what we did some two months ago, that we direct our chief of police to inform BCC that trucks exiting the property will be monitored and stopped and possibly fined, much like we said back in August.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure why, you know, this has not been happening, but yeah, I'm sure.
Well, it, it was happening, and then it's not happening now.
Well, what happened, the problem went away, and then I think, you know.
Yeah.
Things felt otherwise.
Yeah. So I'd, I'd like to, and I know it's not on the agenda, Bob, but I'd like to make a motion that, much like we did in August, we asked the chief to go there. She also called the state police to reinforce the message. We have a bylaw here which substantiate what we're asking for, and I'll read the bylaw and the record. No person shall drive or move any vehicle or truck within said town, the wheels are dirt or tires of which vehicle, unto or deposit in any street, alley, or other public place, mud, dirt, sticky, substance, litter, or foreign matter of any kind.
Okay. Instead of making a motion, I'm just going to direct Terry to ask the chief to do it.
That's all.
Yeah, is this really a criminal type action, or is it better served for the building, building inspector slash bylaw enforcement officer to address?
Yes, John, we had a go-round last week, and I'm of that opinion also.
Okay.
However, I just want to address this as we did before. This has to be worked out, I think, John. I do believe that zoning enforcement officers should enforce presumed bylaws.
Oh, that's pretty good thing to do in my mind. But getting back to the, I think you brought up that wash station, but then he took it down. Has any rationale been stricken at you, or why they did that?
Gentlemen, this isn't even on the agenda, I don't know what to talk about this.
Right.
I mean, I get it, you already had your time of Clean Air Committee update, why didn't you talk about it then?
Well, I said it to talk about it now. My purpose is.
Just talk about it then, because now it's off the agenda, I don't.
Okay, we're done, all right.
And further, why are we going to direct our police department with scarce resources to, to state, to set up traps to, to monitor this?
No, no, no.
Is this where we want to put our resources?
We, we, we're repeating what we did in August, they went there, they explained the situation.
I wasn't that.
They, they reinforced that with police presence, a wash station was enacted, it solved the issue.
Yeah, it was fine. Okay, we're moved now.
Fair enough.
Okay. Any other things you're concerned about? Okay, I was not anticipating four, eight hours before the meeting. Remarks of the Select Board.
Trick or treat.
Oh, yes, Gasani, Gasani.
I know, I just changed.
John doesn't want to miss out.
Hey, I like the change.
Come on, tell me, I'm in the house.
Yeah, I'm here, boss.
I got a special bar for you, buddy.
Can you get jazz?
Yeah, I'll get you some, I'll get you a big one, a big one.
No, not a big one.
One of those $10 ones. Okay. Slito City Announcements. The Dalton Cable Advisory Commission is holding a public hearing on Wednesday, November 5th at 6:30, like Terry said, at the Dalton Senior Center. A meet and greet will take place prior to the public hearing from 6:00 PM to 6:30. Leads you to the town website for mission items. I just wanted to add a couple of things. This town has not had a contract with any of the cable companies since 1997. And if we get this contract, we can get some new updated equipment. Right now, the cable over there is running out on some equipment, and if it breaks, they're down flat because they can't replace it. So this, this is so important, so get everybody out here for this, okay?
Coincidence.
Okay. Dalton Council on 18th is hosting a veteran days luncheon and changing of the flag ceremony on November 7th at 11:30 at the Dalton Senior Center. The Stormwater Management Commission is holding a public hearing on Thursday, November 13th at 4:00 PM at the Dalton Senior Center. For additional details, please visit the town website. Join us Sunday, November 9th for Clean Up at the Pines from 12 to 2:00. Meet the Pines Trail Act, trash bags and gloves will be supplied. Happy Halloween. There you go, John.
Thank you.
As a reminder, trick or treat is Friday, October 31st, at 5:30 to 7:00 PM. Please watch out for the little guys around all over the place out there, because they, they don't care, they just get that sugar eye that's all around. It's raining season again, please don't blow or rake leaves into the street or the chase's water bodies. Yard waste such as leaves, leaf nutrients, and the stormwater runoff, which contributes to water pollution. Don't forget, you can bring your leaves to transfer station or composting. You can also bring up the DPW staff and prevent flooding by keeping any storm drains free of leaves. The Dalton Police Department is reminding the citizens of Dalton of the Winnie Curtain ban, which goes into effect November 15th, 2025, to April 15th, 2026, between the hours from 1:00 AM to 6:00 AM. During this time, there will be no parking allowed on the streets. The Dalton Board of Health is looking for a new board member. The board meets on the second Tuesday of each month at 5:30 PM. Board members may attend the meeting in person or by zone. The Board of Health works to prevent and control diseases, educate the community, and serves as a contact for the public health issues. Please notify the Dalton Board of Health at 684-6111 if interested. The Conservation Committee and the 88 Committee are also looking for volunteers. Please visit the town website for more information. The town, Dalton currently has a following employment opportunities. Emergency on-call operator, DPW motor equipment operator. Please visit the town website or contact the town manager's office for more information. Dalton's official meeting postings, agendas, and minute minutes can be viewed at mytowngovernment.org/01226. The next regular meeting of the Select Board is scheduled to take place on Monday, November 10th, 2025, at 7:00 PM at the Dalton Senior Center, when acting for remote participation. Okay.
Yep.
Of course, I heard you.
Mr. Chairman, I will be adjourned. Second, before we vote, I want to remind everyone that this Sunday, in five days, we revert to a Petrucci Day in town.
Oh, yes.
We didn't turn your clock.
Okay.
All set.
All set.
All set.
Okay.
Take your luggage here.
Once it's been baked and seconded, almost invented.
I like it.
Okay.
Don't forget, we need a lot of.
Put away in the chairs.
Let's have to send it out.